Clarksville Montgomery County Board of Education to order. Our first item on the agenda is our pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. If you would, let's stand together.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is point of pride awards. We have a supplement tonight that's been successful here.
All right. Good evening, Board. I'm excited to have a packed house this evening to present several points of pride. We have everything from academics to athletics to arts and something in between. So we're going to start first if Cade Dieterding could please come forward along with Dr. Sanders, his administrator. Cade is a Rossview High School student who made a perfect score on his ACT exam. The perfect composite score is thirty-six. This score is an average of the four sections scores of English, math, reading, and science. Getting a perfect score on the ACT is very rare. Out of nearly two million students who take the ACT across America, only around 0.3% of students earn a perfect ACT score. Congratulations, Cade. Okay, next, if Ms. Tucker and Ms. Houston and their students from Montgomery Central, Austin Mason, Brooke Mangram, and Tyler Mills could please come forward. Several CMCSS students competed in the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, some of you might know FCC LA, National Conference. Austin, Brooke, and Tyler earned top honors at the competition. Austin Mason, if you just kind of wave your hand, well, you're taking a picture. We'll have you wait just a second. Don't want to mess up the pose. Austin Mason, if you just kind of give us a wave, won first place in interviewing skills and won a $15,000 scholarship. Brooke Mangram won second place in lesson plan development and modification and won an $8,000 scholarship. And I don't think Tyler Mills is here, but scored a 98.5 in the highly competitive toys that teach category. Congratulations, Austin, Brooke, and Tyler. Okay, now if Irene David from Rossview Elementary School along with any teacher or administrator representatives could please come forward. Irene is a second grader at Rossview Elementary whose artwork won second place in the State of Tennessee Art Review and Showcase. Irene's work will be on display at the Tennessee State Museum from March until May of this year. So if you're in Nashville, go check out her work. We are so proud of her for winning second place across the entire state. Okay, next, we will honor the all-state musicians from CMCSS who have auditioned and been selected to perform in an all-state ensemble. If all of the all-state musicians could please come forward along with your administrators and your directors, your teachers, if they are here as well, come forward. These students auditioned and competed against students across the state of Tennessee to earn one of very limited seats in the all-state ensembles. Students will get to rehearse and perform with other talented musicians from across the state in April. From Clarksville High School, we have Mac McDanz who won a seat in the all-state band and his director is Mr. Gaskell. From Montgomery Central High School, Andrew Wall won a place in the all-state choir and Ms. Rouse is the director. And then from Rossview High School, we have Jamie Nolan who won a seat in the all-state band with Mr. Reynolds as the director. And Elizabeth Stevens who won a place in the all-state choir with Ms. Wa as the director. Congratulations, Mac, Andrew, Jamie, and Elizabeth. Okay, and next, if Jayden Steele from Northeast High School along with Director Mr. Booth and Administrator Mr. Massey could please come forward. Through a highly competitive national audition, Jayden was selected for the Honor Band of America. Jayden will get the opportunity to perform with the ensemble made up of students from all across America in March, under the direction of Colonel Timothy Holton, the leader and commander of the United States Army Band, perishing his own. And I know Norm, you're probably really impressed by that, Norm being an army musician himself. All right, next, if the Northwest High School Unified Bowling Team along with Coach Guavara and Coach Jenkins and Administrator Representatives who are here tonight could please come forward. The following students are on the Northwest High School Unified Bowling Team. Brandon Laredo, Chrisely Lawrence, Juan J. Cota, Jashawn Williams, Akayla Farmer, Joseph Jojo Richardson, Kayla Taylor, Michael Thompson, Deontah Crawford, Mackenzie McPeak, and Annalise Poe. We are proud of the Northwest High School Unified Bowling Team for winning runner-up in the TSSAA State Bowling Championship. And I do believe this is the first time we have had a bowling team to win at the state championship. So congratulations, team. Okay, and last, but certainly not least, if the Clarksville High School Wildcats Cheer Team along with Coach Thurman and Coach Kinslow and Administrator Representatives, Mr. Feldman or Mr. Cummings, I think I saw at least one of you here, if you could please come forward. The cheerleaders on the team are Anna Grace Parker, Marie Brock, Ari Seun, Jamiah Leaks, Blair Butcher, Chloe Blevins, Ella Gallagher, Julie Alfred, Kinsley Savage, Madeline Brunner, McKenna Carbon, Sanya Bow, Ella Roberts, Kennedy Lang, Graham Bryant, Laney Rogers, Peyton Hay, Aubrey Hardy, Mailey Carbon, Shaleah Griffey, Ava Austin, and Kylie Clarett. At the National High School Cheerleading Competition in Orlando, the Wildcats Cheer Team won the bronze medal in the D1 Small Varsity Game Day Division with three zero deduction routines. Congratulations on bringing home the bronze medal, and we also thank you for bringing home some warmer weather for us. That does conclude this evening's point of pride. You probably know we also have a couple of state championship wrestling teams, but we have some individuals who are competing over the next couple of weeks. And so to make it more efficient for families and students, we're going to hold those all together there in March. So thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is public conversation. If those, we appreciate those who came for the awards and want to say congratulations again. And before we start public comments, if you would like to ease out, I don't blame you. Our first speaker is Ms. Lopez. I'm afraid to try to pronounce some of the names. Mr. Lopez, Sarge, should have just put Sarge on there. I remember Ronnie Glenn's only name I remember. Ms. Morales. Then Hannah, Din, and Ronnie Glenn. Ms. Brandon dropped out today. She's going to come next month. Again, our public comments now. Our first speaker is Ms. Lopez. I'm afraid to try to pronounce some of the names. Mr. Lopez, Sarge, should have just put Sarge on there. As you're approaching, I'll let you know that turn on the microphone by pushing the front right silver button. The timer will display on the microphone screen to show you the allotted time, and the microphone will light red to show you it's active. The microphone will flash during the last minute of your allotted time. The microphone will shut off after five minutes. Go ahead, Sarge.
So, good evening. Sorry, I'm a little tardy, so had to fight Nashville traffic to get here. May God bless us if we ever grow as big as Nashville. That is some terrible, terrible, terrible infrastructure. But the reason I'm up here today is because of the policy for the school naming process. I like it. I mean, I believe it's fair for what it is. Little dated though, not gonna lie, little dated, right? We made this thing in 2013, so it's about nine years old. We updated it in 2015 saying that the more procedures of how, better procedures, how to have done. Now, one of the things I don't like the policy, about the policy, is that it says we cannot name anybody, any individual for a school name. We can name a field after them, cafeteria after them, things like that, but not a building. Once again, policy was done in 2000, I said redone in 2015. Well, since 2015, though, we have lost a lot, a lot of civil rights activists since then. I had a list, I forgot it, such in a rush coming over here, but Pastor Jimiteri was one of them. I believe he passed in 2017 after the policy was done. Commissioner Kendall was another one. I believe he passed in 2021. And, I mean, come on, man, he did forty-two years on the county commission, and maybe he deserves a school named after him? Just saying, just saying. This all came about because I wanted, I was asked a, I asked a question at the county commission meeting. Thank you county commissioners for allowing me to speak in that meeting, allowing me to use my First Amendment right. It's why, why is there no Wilma Rudolph school name? We can even express that to Martin Luther King, maybe. I know we got stuff named after him. That was my biggest, what people told me is the biggest challenge. It's like, we already got streets named after him, we got events named after him, we don't need no more recognition. But my lovely school board, my very smart school board, because I see about a million dollars of education up in there, it's in front of me. How much is too much? It's a, really? So having a couple of buildings for someone that marched with Martin Luther King, was a civil rights leader, it's the first televised Olympics in the history of the world, and as a Wilma Rudolph won three gold medals, changing the whole dynamic of a culture, of a people. And there's one learning center in Chicago named after her hometown. We ain't got nothing? Nothing? Well, streets, event center, I get it. But, so, it's hard, it's hard. It's National, it says National History, Black History Month, right? There's a way that we could honor some of our local heroes, and we missed that opportunity. And I don't think that's fair. I get it. I really do. It's that, it's hard. It's hard to look at the past because our past is pretty ugly. I ain't gonna, I ain't gonna lie. But there's a chance to correct that, a chance to make it more beautiful, a chance to make it more inspiring. And got thirty seconds left, so, so, I was at the educational forum on Saturday that Representative Ronnie Glenn gave, and he said, and I want a direct quote, it's not a direct quote because my mind's terrible, but something like, "If they look like us, they will inspire us. If we have more minorities that's out there being heroes, maybe our minorities will be inspired." And because of that, I feel that we should re-take a look at this policy letter. Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you, Sarge. Hobson Morales, Ms. Hobson Morales, thank you. Again, turn the microphone on by pressing the right silver button. You've used it before, haven't you? Okay, on the right side of the silver button, press it, it will activate the mic, it will turn on red. You'll have five minutes. That light will begin to flash when you're down to one minute, and the microphone will shut off at the end of your time. You may begin.
Okay, I'll make this quick. Thanks for having me. As you said, I'm Hobson Morales, no, many know me as Morales, but they know me as Hobson. I'm here to talk about a quick issue that involves me. There's talk in the community about hiring minorities in schools around the district, and of course, I am a minority. There's talk from educators that are teachers that want to become administrators, APs, or principals, that they feel like their applications are being blocked, and they're not even being considered for positions that they strongly believe they are qualified for. I know for a fact that there was a time in this district that my application was being blocked. I have four degrees, forty-two certifications, not to include certifications like criminal justice, advanced placement, avid certification, and so on, and my application was blocked. Before Ms. Johnson left, the former HR person, I asked her about my application being blocked, and I'll explain what I mean by blocked. Beside my name, when it went before principals, there was a note that they needed to contact a member of HR, and I won't call that member's name, but the member's name was there before selecting me. Okay? Once I had that conversation with Ms. Johnson before she left, she admitted it. I had a meeting with her, as well as Dr. Huff was present, and she admitted that it had taken place. After that, my name did start appearing on lists and I received interviews. I have been selected for two positions in this district that I turned down, one for medical reasons and another for a personal reason. But prior to that, you see this? Non-selections. I keep up with them. So, with that being said, I am a certified, qualified administrator. And this year, upcoming year, and whatever's posted now, I will be applying for administrative positions. And so I hope my application is not blocked for whatever reason. As we just heard someone speak about minorities, we need educators in the classroom that reflect the campus. When we have educators like myself that are highly qualified to be in these positions and are not being placed in them, that's a problem. You're hearing from me, but there are many others out there like me. Rossview, there's no reason to have only one African-American educator on that campus with the makeup of students that's on that campus. There's no reason to have four administrators on the majority of the campuses throughout this district that are Caucasian. Look at the makeup of our students. We need that makeup of our educators as well. Thank you.
Can't read my writing, but I think it says, "Hail Dish" is next. Watch for that. Haley Deanna, that's how poor my writing is. Once again, the microphone, you turn on with the right silver button, and it will turn red when it's active. You'll have five minutes to speak. It will begin to flash with four minutes, and the microphone will go off at the end of the five minutes. You may begin.
All right. Thank you for having me here. My name is actually Haley Din. I came here today to address the 2020, 2023, 2024 Student Code of Conduct and the zero tolerance offenses and the way that the Rossview High School staff and SROs conducted themselves. My son, who is a senior, was expelled during the quote-unquote sweep of the Rossview High School parking lot on October 18th due to a vape found in his car. Although I cannot go into finite details of his case, I'm happy to refer you to the school board and his lawyer if you would like that information. If you go to look on page sixty-one of the Code of Conduct, mask searches are not allowed. I have asked this, why then this sweep was allowed? I've asked the staff, I've asked the SROs, and nobody can give me an answer. And in fact, the school lawyer decided that it was a classroom setting that the mask sweep or mask search applied to. But the Code of Conduct does not differentiate between classroom and car searches. So then I ask you, how was this quote-unquote sweep allowed? I just want to further clarify that my son has never been in trouble up until this point. No behavioral actions have ever been taken. He's never been suspended. He's a good, respectful kid. But now, because of this, this sweep and a vape being found, he was then expelled for the remainder of his senior year and put into the age program. I have sent multiple appeals to the central office staff, to Ms. Sanders at Rossview to allow him to walk at graduation. I've not asked for Lane to go back into school. I've not asked for Lane to attend prom. I just simply wanted him to be able to walk with his fellow classmates. If you're not familiar with this age program, as I've talked to a couple of the board members, I would strongly urge you to do some research. The age program is not conducive to a learning environment, and it leads the kids enrolled out to the wind with very little support and absolutely zero educational value. I completely understand that this is the system's manner of putting forth an effort to allow the students to still be in school and graduate. However, this program has to be overhauled. I'll give you an example. My son finished Statistics II in two and a half days. There's no educational value in that. It is my opinion that the current zero tolerance offenses in place are to establish a precedent of absolute control by the school administration without considering the previous behavior of the student. The Rossview High School staff has very easily thrown my son out to fend for himself without trying to consider what they could do to help him correct this behavior and keep my son in school and on the path to graduate this year. I had a meeting last week with Dr. Sanders and Ms. Houston in regards to another matter, and I very formally told them they have failed my son and the other kids that were expelled that day who had never had any behavioral issues before. That's essentially what this school has done. They have failed my son. In addition, the lies the Rossview High School staff and the SROs have told my family throughout the process of expelling my son and other incidents, inclusive of asking for the field drug test results, which I was told no other parent had ever asked for before, and then only getting them when I went to an appeal hearing, versus what actually was reported on these field drug test results because they don't match. The lack of knowledge in the SROs and in the school administrator that conducted my son's appeal was abominable. They did not have any assistance to help us navigate the appeals and how to move forward with this. I know the SROs don't work for the school, but if the SROs are going to be in these meetings, the staff and the SROs should work together and not separately. I want to further this by saying that they actually put my son's life in danger. They wanted my son to give up the name of the kid who sold him the vape. The problem is, is this kid is a known gang member, and he has not been allowed to be apprehended. Why is that okay to put my son's life at danger? I want to just really end with this. My son's mental health has been extremely affected. He has been mourning the death of his senior year. And I'm not saying there should be no consequences for these actions, but these are mistakes and we all make them. My son actually just texted me before this meeting thanking me, "Mom, thank you for fighting for me over and over again." If that doesn't tell you what kind of student he is, I don't know what would. I will be formally sending a request to Ms. Luna Vader for my son to walk at graduation, and I really think that this whole zero tolerance offenses need to be overhauled because this is not fair to our kids. You are failing our kids. Thank you.
Turn the microphone with the silver button to the right. It will turn red. You have five minutes to speak. It will begin to flash when you have one left. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, and it's a pleasure to be here. I want to give a few minutes to just kind of brief what's going on at our state legislature and the things that I am working on. As many of you have been following our public education system, it's been the focus of attention that has not always been to the benefit of our students, our teachers, or our community. In November, I served on a committee to investigate whether or not the state education system should send back the $1.8 billion we receive each year from the federal government, dollars that are paid by Tennessee taxpayers and sent back to our schools. It was no surprise that this was not a good idea. The large part of that money goes to free and reduced lunch, food for our kids. Like 98% of Tennesseans, I am a product of our public school system. I came up hard. School was often a place of stability for me. Some days, my only meal would be the one served in the school cafeteria. If you want to know the truth, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the teachers, bus drivers, and cafeteria workers at Lauderdale County Schools. I couldn't believe when some of my colleagues questioned whether to fund the free lunch and reduced lunch program, knowing that there are still thousands of little kids in the state who, like I, depend on those meals to get by. That's why I refused to sign on to the letter from our committee encouraging our state to reject those funds, and I'll continue to do so throughout this session. But I didn't come here to tell you about everything that's wrong in our education, with education in Tennessee. I'm here to talk about what we can do to make it better. I think it's important that folks closest to the problem should be at the table when finding solutions. That's why I've worked together to gather information and guidance from Clarksville's educators and administrators to bring home the resources we need and set policies that support our educators. Here are a few of the policies. Number one, to ensure that students are given tools to improve themselves and learn from the hard situations, I've introduced a bill that requires schools to teach one-hour conflict resolution during, in-school suspension. I want every student to see themselves in the educators that shape their futures, improving efforts to make sure our students, our teacher diversity is representational of our students' demographics. I think you've heard that several times a day. To make sure our students have all the tools to build a bright future, I am calling for a pilot program with a family resource center, with access to career opportunities and, and education applications, sorry about that. To address the shortages of teachers statewide, we want to, we want a program to incentivize more students to become teachers. And finally, to support our education, our special education students and teachers providing individual education plans, I'm calling for a cap on the number of students in our inclusion classes. This session, we would consider the largest This session, we would consider the largest change in our education system since its founding. The statewide voucher program, it will allow families, it will, it will allow families to apply for up to $7,000 a year to go toward tuition at private schools of their choice. It sounds too good to be true because it is. What they don't tell you is in the fine print is that our public schools are funded based on the amount of students enrolled, and for every student that disenrolls, the school system will be defunded by thousands of dollars. The Constitution of Tennessee requires us to support free public schools, not private schools. Private schools can pick and choose, private schools can pick and choose their pupils, considering religion, test scores, disabilities, leading to more disparity in our education system. Disabled, low performing, and minority students will face the most harm if we would divert public school dollars to private schools. So many of our kids will lose their federal rights under the voucher program. Tennessee children have the privilege of being raised in the best state in the country. We care about our neighbors and we want our children to have better opportunities than we did, but I'm afraid our state government will ask, how are the children? And we cannot truthfully answer, all our children are well. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public comments. Our next item on the agenda is approval of consent agenda. I've motioned Mr. Patterson to approve consent agenda. I have a second from Mrs. Pace. Please open the vote. Is everyone satisfied with their vote? Please close the vote. It passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is policy monitoring. Dr. Vedder.
Board, please find in your board packet information on executive limitation three, Personnel Administration. This executive limitation has 15 compliance expectations that the Director of Schools shall assure the recruitment, employment, development, evaluation, and compensation of district employees, consultants, and contract workers in a manner necessary to not jeopardize achievement of its ends policies, fiscal integrity, or public image of the district. As the Director, I have not changed my own compensation or benefits, nor has any employee been promised nor implied permanent employee, employment. The Human Resources Department has an applicant electronic tracking system and selection process to identify qualified, certified, and classified candidates. Additionally, there are policies and procedures developed and available for all employees to review. Furthermore, there are multiple venues available to employees and public for registering complaints and concerns. All positions in the district have current job descriptions and applicants are interviewed and hired based upon documentation verifying the requirements of the job descriptions, state employment standards, and federal guidelines to include criminal history background checks. Employee investigations, evaluations, and personal information are kept confidential pursuant, pursuant to Tennessee Code annotated. CMCSS salary schedules are reviewed on a yearly basis and compared to similar districts in the state. Finally, the culture and work of the district is annually reviewed and realigned through the strategic planning process, so employees have an understanding of their connection to student achievement and success. Chairman Griffey, this concludes executive limitation three.
Is there a motion to accept? I've motioned Mr. Garland, a second from Mrs. Pace. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please open the vote. Is everyone satisfied with your vote? Please close the vote. The motion passes 7-0. Next item is board discussion and consideration of naming of elementary school number 26. Dr. Vedder.
Board members, presented to you the last meeting was a, a name for consideration. This meeting, I believe there is going to be considerable discussion about a potential name for elementary 26 and whether or not that vote will be conducted at this meeting or a future meeting for consideration of naming. So, uh, I believe there's, there's going to be conversation on potential names for elementary number 26.
At this point, we have a recommendation from the Director of a name to get discussion on the floor. I think we need a motion to accept or deny that recommendation since, because it's been presented already in the work session. So may I get a motion for one or the other? Mr. Patterson's light was on first.
To, to get to the discussion part of it, I, I'll make a motion that we accept the, uh, naming of the school that the Director has named, and I would seek a second where we could discuss.
Now I have a motion and need a second for the recommendation. Is there a second? I have a second from Mr. Mabry. Now I have a motion and a second on the floor to accept the Director's recommendation. I'll open it for discussion. Another, as mentioned by Dr. Vedder, the discussion will need to be handled as to amendments or somewhere along those lines at this point. So I'll open it now for discussion. And again, we have the new system, so I'm looking for the first green light that comes on. Ms. Berry.
I cannot support the name that was brought forth due to the research that I did, and the name is not one I think would reflect one of our schools. And I won't go into the details, but you can look it up for yourself. And I, uh, am against this name for that reason. Thank you.
I think next is Mr. Herp, Mr. Nelson.
My understanding is to actually, um, name or use a person's name. We have to go back and change our current policy that was adopted in 2015.
That would be correct.
So I'd like to make a motion that we go back and look at, uh, changing our policy.
I will be happy to accept that motion once we get this motion off the floor. At this time, I could not accept it, but I'd be happy to accept it at the end of this discussion or when this motion is closed. Uh, Mr. Garland.
I, uh, I, I agree with Ms., uh, Ms. Berry. I, I really do, uh, thank Big Sarge for the statement that he made about, uh, there are people that have worked in this community, uh, but we cannot name the schools after them, uh, and they are rarely, they really aren't deserving. Nobody's sitting up here. I, I can understand if we, if the person is expired, I can, I can understand that not choosing someone that is still here today. But the bottom line that there are people that actually put work in, in this district, uh, and they, the area that the school is in would qualify them to have a facility named after them because of the things that they've done to make Clarksville and our school system per se a better place. I, I, I could also support, uh, whatever it takes to change the way the schools, schools are named, but the bottom line is I think that the, the way this one was named, I think that it came, it came down wrong. And to, it like, like, uh, Mrs. Berry say that if you want to know why we oppose this name, go out and do your research. Take a look at the name itself, and then you'll know the reason why we actually oppose it. People can do what they want, but the bottom line is we need to make sure that our schools will not bring any, any disdain in where the point, whereas in concerning the name of the school, especially when we're talking about our children. We're talking about our children today.
Ms. Berry again.
And I would like to say I too disagree the way that the name was selected. I think that it should have been, we should have considered our core values and our mission first, then we should have brainstormed and then set a session that was scheduled. Then we should have had preliminary hearings, after which we should have done research and looked at the feedback from the research, and then a final decision made. But for a name to just be, uh, I would say selected, and then we're told what it is after the fact, I feel like we were slighted as board members, and I think the citizens should have input. And I just think that we do need to change our policy and consider naming the school after someone that is deserving of it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Patterson. Call for questions. Uh, question has been called for. Please open the vote. All in favor of the recommendation of the Director for the name of the new schools? I shouldn't have said that. Just cast your vote. Soon as I learn how. Is everyone satisfied with your vote? Someone has not voted. Is that intentional? Please close the vote. Vote fails. Does not pass because it does not have a majority. It's kind of weird. It's a 3-3-1. Don't think I've seen that before, but the motion fails. Mr. Nelson had a recommendation and a proper motion for what your consideration is would be for the board to review that policy unless you already have one written.
No, I do not, but I would like us as a board to relook our policy and, and address it to, uh, where we are allowed to have a wider selection of names for our next elementary school.
Okay.
And schools in the future.
We have a, a motion on the table by Mr. Nelson to review our policy on school name recognition. Is there a second? Mr. Patterson, is that a second?
Yes, I'd like to make a second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Ms. Berry.
I'm sorry, I was.
There is no discussion. Then I will call for a vote for the school board to review the policy of naming schools. Please open the vote. Is everyone satisfied with your vote? Please close the vote. That motion passes 7-0 to review that policy. Next item on the agenda is comments by Fort Campbell School liaison officer. There she is. Yeah, she's got it on. Now push your silver button. There you go.
The Garrison would like to thank Dr. Luna Vedder for attending our annual Fort Campbell Student Transition Response Team and Resource Fair that was held on February 8th. Your presence was greatly appreciated. March is Music in Our Schools Month. Historically, during the month of March, the 101st Airborne Division Aerosol Band goes out to our local schools and neighboring communities to perform and interact with students. So far, the Clarksville Montgomery County Schools and the band is scheduled to visit , uh, Burns Darden Elementary, Rossview High, and Rossview Middle, Hazelwood Elementary, Kenwood High, Oakland Elementary, and Sango Elementary, and we are looking for other schools to call in schedule. Thank you for allowing us to be of service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. CMCEA President.
Is it on? Okay, I got it. All right. Good evening, Steffi Alwaz, CMCEA President. Groundhog Day, it's more than just a day in February. Since Bill Murray's 1993 hit comedy, Groundhog Day has become synonymous with the concept of deja vu, and here we are with our very own Groundhog Day. The General Assembly has reconvened, and hot topics in Nashville include: school safety, again. Legislators will be deciding ways to keep students, educators, and schools safe from threats of violence. Education savings accounts, again. Legislators will be deciding whether to expand the voucher program statewide, diverting funds from public schools to unaccountable private entities. Third grade retention, again. And starting this year, fourth graders will be impacted by retention requirements set in state law. Curriculum and books, again. Additional legislation has already been filed that will further impact educators' ability to teach state standards with fidelity and without fear. And last, school about accountability, again. Some legislators recognize that a single letter grade cannot accurately reflect the complex, complex work that happens in schools, and there's so much more. Communities, including their educators, must be influencing all decisions that impact our students, educators, and families. Here's something else that may be creating a sense of deja vu. The educators in the CMCSS school district are and remain committed to partnering with district leaders, school board members, and families to advocate for the resources, policies, and laws that will ensure Clarksville Montgomery County is the best place in which to live, teach, and learn. As we follow the happenings in Nashville, please commit to having discussions with the Clarksville Montgomery County Education Association about how legislation considered in Nashville will realistically and directly impact our school district. Thank you.
Next. PET representative.
I came prepared. The last time I lost my voice, I'm bringing some water with me just in case. Good evening, school board members and Dr. Luna Vedder. As we, as was just mentioned a few minutes ago, it seems like the bills that are rolling out of the legislature from our sources are like moving targets. You're throwing things up against the wall just to see what's going to stick. So the universal voucher bill, from my understanding, is going to be rolled out on Thursday. Advocates of universal vouchers argue that they will enhance public school students' education quality. However, most students who would benefit from universal vouchers are already attending private schools. It is important to note that this is not a quick fix solution to improve public schools. We must also look at state resources and determine what is currently feasible. The concept of universal vouchers, as we see it now, will not improve public education in Tennessee if that is the goal. We must consider income, school quality, or eligibility parameters traditionally set for families and schools in need. Universal vouchers would be a subsidy and benefit private schools Universal vouchers would be a subsidy and benefit private schools across the state. Legislators must prioritize their constituents, in other words, listen to us. Citizens must communicate their priorities to political leaders at every opportunity and vote. Children's needs should be the top priority in Tennessee's education policy. Decisions must be made solely for the benefit of all students. We must prioritize collaborative policymaking that considers the needs of Tennessee's children and educators. So we need to engage in more debate before adopting any universal voucher proposal. Our democratic processes must be open, inclusive, and responsible, responsive to the people they serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments by county commissioners. I've got four shakes of no. Comments by board members. I'm looking for green lights. Mr. Garland.
I agree with all of the comments that were made by the leaders of the teachers' associations. Education is the moral, new moral currency for the world today. A child's education is going to guarantee whether or not they are successful or failures. This voucher bill that the governor is putting out is, number one, is demeaning to some, and it's derogatory to others, but it's false, it's a false presentation. Because the people that's going to actually benefit from this bill is going to be those that actually have their children in private schools today. Bottom line is, $7,000 is not going to pay for a child to go to private school. $7,000 is not going to cover the cost. Most people who have their children in private school today are paying way more. So that means that only the elitists will have a chance to use that system that has been perpetuated by those we put in office. Think about that. We, as board members, we need to be mindful that our job is make sure that policies that we put in place at this level is to make sure that all of the children in Montgomery County get a chance to get a quality education, and that is the focus of this board. And as long as I sit here, that will be my focus, and when I step away, it will still be my focus. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Berry.
I just want to say that I'm committed to being kind and doing an act of kindness every day. Yesterday, I was in Walgreens, and there was a mother, and I could tell she was frantic, and I was listening to her talk to the clerk that was checking her out. She had a couple of items, food items, and she said, "Can I borrow 50 cents?" And the clerk said, "No." That mother went back, and she got two of the largest packages of ramen noodles that she could get. And God said to me, "Carol, ask her if she has children." I said, "You have children, ma'am?" She said, "I do." I knew that that woman needed food for her children and herself. So I took it upon myself, I prayed with her, and then I walked with her to the register. She didn't know what I was going to do, but it was laid on my heart to pay for her items. She had ramen noodles, and I made some other suggestions, and I paid for that. So many of us are so blessed. I don't have a whole lot of money, but I handed that later, the money I had. I don't know what she's going to do with it. It's not my responsibility to know what she's going to do. But children should not be hungry in Clarksville, Tennessee. So yes, I'm broke. I gave my little money, but I believe I'll be blessed for being a blessing. I don't usually toot my own horn, but I do try to do an act of kindness every opportunity I get. Thank you.
Mr. Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to clarify in case there was any question. The reason I, I can't speak for Mr. Mayberry, the reason I made the motion for the new school is where we could discuss it and where we could, of course, have another amendment if needed to be.
There you go. I was waiting on you, yes. Yes, it's always better to make a positive motion in rupturous order, so, exactly. I just want to congratulate all the Boy and Pride Honors recipients today. I also do want to say, since Mr. Garland's comments were addressed as the board, I don't necessarily agree with everything he just said. I believe in school choice. I believe in parents' right to choose what's best for their kids, and even if that finances helps them get to that point, I'm a supporter of that, though that is not up for us as a board to decide. And on the school name, I do like the idea of naming it something to do with Fort Campbell. I like that idea. As I pondered what was said to me about if you Google the name, what comes up, that's where my decision came from. But I also agree that we should potentially look into making it where we can name a school after somebody who is deceased, not living, because there obviously could be lots of problems with someone who is living, not knowing what they're going to do in the future. But someone that made an impact in our community that is noteworthy, I do believe that we should be able to name a school after them, so I would support that as we continue that conversation. Thank you.
Just a little bit of a backup here. On Mr. Nelson's motion that passed, there is no rush on finding a name for the school, but we do need to instruct on when this item should be brought up. Are you considering like March work session or April? Or when would you like to see that brought up on the agenda for work session?
For our next study session, if that's possible.
So that would be for the March study session. So we'll bring up policy review on that in the March study session. Thank you. And echo a little bit of Mr. Mayberry's comments. I don't think it's ever a bad idea for the board to review policies, because sometimes they need changing. I do, however, appreciate the director and the staff following the current policy and bringing a name before this board. And I always want to thank them for the hard work they do. I'm certain there was a lot of work that went into it, and we do not want that to be unrecognized or ungrateful for that work. Some of the things that Ms. Outlaw talked about and Mr. Garland referred to, my recommendation is keep up with the laws that are coming. Ms. Outlaw certainly nailed a lot of things that are Groundhog Day that affect the school system. I went to a seminar that was a couple of days long last week on the legal changes going on in the school system, and they're drastic, not necessarily drastic, but go deep, even as far down as the high school sports programs and making changes there that I do think would have some negative impacts on the public schools. So keep up with your legislatures and stay in touch with them and voice your opinion, whatever it is. And appreciate Mr. Ronnie Glenn being here and expressing himself. I don't think we, he's been here twice now, and I think he's the only one that has, and we appreciate that. And that concludes my comments. Director's report.
Good evening, board members. Hopefully, everyone has been following social media over the past couple of weeks highlighting all the teachers of the year across the district. Seeing and hearing about the impact that our educators have on the lives of students never ceases to amaze me. I'm looking forward to honoring our teachers later this week at a banquet, and I can't wait to see who will win the trip to Cabo. Last week was the deadline for families to apply for schools of choice within CMCSS. I'm excited to share that approximately 1,300 applications were submitted. They included almost 700 applications for our nine high school academies, 101 applications for More Magnet, 151 applications for the Spanish Immersion at Barksdale, 159 for the Middle College at Austin P., 114 new virtual school applications, and 84 submissions for the Early Technical College. This does not yet include all of the seats that will be coming available through open enrollment in early March. We will continue to ensure that our families in CMCSS have options to find the right fit for each student. Mr. Griffey, this concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Vedder. This meeting is adjourned.